How's that?
Hey.
Hey, Mark.
How are you?
I'm doing good, thanks.
A minute, a minute. Just trying to get everyone going here. Heidi. Kelly. Tia. Tia, I'm making you a co-host tonight, too. Let's see.
Hope.
Should be on mute, Tia. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Hopefully, everybody had a chance to sit down in the sun for a while this morning.
Yeah. All right, we got Ryan. We got Heidi. Heidi, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, you got, you have two boxes.
I do? Why?
I don't know.
Can I close one?
Wait a second. No, all right.
I do. Actually, I see that. I have no idea.
Whatever.
I'll only vote once, I promise.
Scotty. All right, we got Ryan. Which Ryan has to unmute. Ryan, you on?
Hello.
Hey, Ryan. Evening.
There he is. Ryan, Raj.
Have you been?
Yes.
Have you been thrown out of the house? What did you do? He's in the doghouse. He's in the doghouse.
He's frozen.
Yeah, I think he is.
Garage doesn't have Wi-Fi.
That's why it's why he sent him there. You're going in the garage.
It's not going well for Ryan.
Ryan, you may have to try to relog in, Fran.
Am I here? Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
I can.
All right. Oh, Dan Higginson's here tonight.
Dean, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can.
All right, Ryan, you should be on mute.
All right, thank you. I had to change my internet connection.
There you go.
I can see you, hear you.
All right.
Dean looks muted.
Yep. He had to... Dan, you on?
Yep.
All right.
No video, huh?
Well.
You should be on mute.
Video.
You gotta start the video. There you go.
There we go.
Stop, click stop. There you go. Start video.
All right. All right, we got Heidi. We got Kelly. We got Scott. Got Mr. Marco. Got Mr. Haley. We got Heidi. We got Dean. And we got Dan. And we got Tia.
Wow.
We got a full boat tonight.
We are here.
Perfect.
Ryan, would your wife not allow you in the house after you won the reelection?
You're wondering.
I had three little girls running around. I'm like, all right, I gotta disappear.
You got this. Oh, boy.
Congratulations, you two, on your fabulous reelection. Mr. Blank was pushing you a little bit.
It was a close race, I tell you.
He didn't get you.
It was the campaigning.
Blank.
Yes, yes.
Particularly like your platform speech, Ryan. It's good to have high aspirations.
Exactly.
You gotta have goals, you know, for your term.
I find that if you don't set goals, that way, if you don't achieve them, you're never let down.
There you go, Dan. Sounds like a surveyor.
What do you mean, we're supposed to come all the way back to one spot?
It's supposed to close? It's the ye olde fudge factor.
I was talking about personally, not professionally.
Okay.
You opened the door, Danny.
Yeah.
I believe with everybody here and the time it is, we can open this meeting.
We can.
Could we start with a pledge, please? Can someone put us up?
I think that is... She is in charge of that. She does a good job. There you go.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
Of the United States of America And to the Republic For which it stands, One nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was everyone able to review the previous minutes of 2:24? Any comment? We talked a lot, I'll tell you that.
Is that right?
I would entertain for a motion of acceptance.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the February 24th meeting.
Those in favor, Tia?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, I wasn't here, but I did watch the tape.
Heidi?
Yes.
Scott?
He's still muted.
He is?
Yep.
He was... Don't beat yourself, Scotty.
Dean, there's one correction that I had.
Okay.
On page six of the draft, a comment toward the bottom of the page where it says, "Dean Terrell asked if the silver, the only color the tower could be." At the bottom of that paragraph, they state, "A tower tall in 150 feet would need zoning board approval." That should read 85, which is 20 feet above our tree level.
Okay.
For a correction.
And we will note that in the motion. Let's start over again. Tia?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Abstaining, I was not there.
Okay, and I would approve them. I would say, other than Bill abstaining, any other projects of regional impact, Mr. Fournier, other than the 20-mile notification of the public hearing?
Oh, sir.
Let's go right into the public hearing tonight.
All right. It's, yeah, just to clarify, we, the board closed the public hearing. It's still a public meeting. But the board did close the public hearing on the case that you're about to read, just for
Okay.
Public edification.
PB case 2021, semicolon, 01, proposed site plan application for the construction of 150-foot monopole wireless communication tower and accessory equipment. 796 Liberty Hill Road, owner Tom Paton on 2012 revocable trust and K. Goss revocable trust applicant, Vertex Tower Assets LLC, map 1-65, zoned RR, and this was tabled from February 24th. Just to open it up, just in review, I think part of the problem that we're running into here is we're climbing over with a number of meetings over the same topic. I believe we need, and I don't know exactly how to do it, whether it needs to be a motion or whether we can simply... I have different opinions on whether or not we are in total, or the majority rules, on whether or not we need to camouflage this tower. And I think if we took a simple vote, we could find out where we could stand on that and proceed from there.
Well, if you, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chair, why don't I just tee us up for as far as where we're at and where I think we're, what action the boards should take tonight. Just to reflect on our last meeting, the board tabled the application and requested that the applicant look at submitting to the board a camouflage pine tree for the tower. As you know, a letter was submitted to you advocating that they didn't think that would be appropriate at this location. And the attorney is on the call tonight. You can certainly go into it if you'd like. They submitted a, so I guess a rust-colored type of material that they feel will blend in more into the environment. There's two waivers before you, Mr. Chairman. One has to do with the height. Our rules state that the height of the tower cannot be more than 20 feet higher than the adjoining tree canopy. So they're actually asking for a waiver from that. And they're also asking a waiver from having to camouflage. So those are still on the table.
Mr. Chairman, no, we voted on both of those waivers at the last meeting, I believe.
The height we approved.
Right, and it was, and that was a three to two, I believe it was three to two vote on that one, and then the camouflage, it was a unanimous vote to camouflage it.
That was just before we adjourned at the end of the meeting. Page six, there was a 3-2 motion on the height waiver. And page seven, Tia Hooper made the motion not to approve the camouflage waiver. I second it. Motion carried 5-0.
So you approved the height waiver?
Yes.
But you did not approve the camouflage?
Correct.
Well, thus, if you look at the PB case, it states the construction of 150-foot monopole, which meant it was okayed at the last meeting and brought forward.
The pole, the pole only being above 85 feet. It was two separate waivers they were looking for. Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah.
Two separate waivers.
There are two separate waivers. So, you know, we advertised what they were asking for. So the applicant is making a case that they don't feel it's appropriate to camouflage it. And, you know, what was in your packet from the last sent over to you is what they are as sort of their second choice. So I guess the board should discuss if that, if they feel that that's acceptable or not. Obviously, you may have to reconsider the waiver because you did vote not to approve the waiver.
So, if I might, Mr. Chair, again, my name is Francis Priest, representing the applicant. I believe that we're all kind of sort of saying the same thing here. I do believe that the height waiver was granted. I do believe, as Ms. Hooper stated, that the waiver to request no camouflage was denied. And that therefore, we were asked to propose a camouflage technique. And that's what we have done. We're not seeking a revote on the waiver. We're just proposing a camouflage technique. And we'd like to talk about that as part of this camouflage discussion.
I would think I would like to go back to what I originally stated at the beginning of this meeting to find out if the group is unified on whether or not we have decided whether we need camouflage or not, rather than just all darting out in different directions.
Dean, I, in, you know, talking with people in town and what have you, I think one of the biggest concerns is camouflage. And I think this rusted pole looks great. And I think that when they put some branches on it and make it look like a fake tree, it's going to be even better. And that's where we should be.
And I agree with you. I think the color is perfect.
Yeah, I love the color. Color is great.
I think adding branches to it will put it, get it to our likings.
Yep, absolutely. I think that, you know, that's where we need to be. I realize there's other poles in town that aren't like that, but those aren't as modern. They were approved before I was on the board and what have you. And just in general discussions around town with townspeople who know that I'm on the board, it's pretty widespread that, you know, we want to see some branches on this thing to break it up. And nothing short of that will satisfy me as far as camouflage goes.
All right, I'd like to speak to this point. We do have other towers in this town that stick out much, much more prominently than this tower does. You can see the top of Pat's Peak from almost anywhere, and those towers stick up boldly. I come down off of Bear Hill. I'm working over that way. I look to the west, and I see the tower over there that's sticking up above the canopy. No branches. What I found was, listening to the last meeting, was that most everybody agreed that you can't see the tower. The pictures show it, or the pictures show that you can't see the tower. People looked at it with binoculars and couldn't see the tower.
Not to interrupt you, Bill, but I'm going to, as a point of clarification, we were talking about the balloon, not
Yes, you're right.
There as a tower.
Yeah, you're, I agree with that, the balloon, the balloon test. And that is what the balloon test was, you know, that's what it's for. But I think there was, there was some, maybe some consensus that it wasn't very visible at all. That's what I got out of the meeting. One of the second things I got out of the meeting was that everybody agreed that the putting branches on these towers doesn't enhance the look of the towers. I heard comments like, "It makes it look like Charlie Brown Christmas tree." And I tend to agree with you. Today, I drove 89 a couple of times, and I looked at that tower over off of 89 in Hopkinton. And those spindly branches that they put over that thing, it just, it just doesn't do it for me. I don't know how it can enhance the look. It doesn't look like a pine tree at all. It doesn't. And I've talked to other people, too, and they have the same opinion. Those things look almost hideous to some people. You know, we've got, we've got steel structures, metal structures, all through our landscape. You drive down a highway and you see the guardrails. We don't ask our state and highway departments to cover the guardrails with hedgerows. I, I kind of am concerned that we are throwing a roadblock into this process when it doesn't, it didn't seem to make any sense. Again, I go back to, you can't see it very well, to what you wanted to put on it, looked ugly. I will agree that this brown rusty look is an improvement. But as far as the other factors go, and I've talked to some citizens, too, and got agreement on the, the branches deal. So that's, it just didn't make any sense, listening to that meeting, where, what you're trying to do that week. So that's where I'm standing.
Any other comment?
Well, Bill, I think some points of clarification. It was a balloon on a cloudy day that had some limited visibility. It was visible from quite a few areas as a balloon, not as just a pole. And we had asked Fran to come back to the board with some options to look like a tree. I agree, the one over there on 89 is rather sparse. But I think there's multiple levels that they can provide. And we had asked to have Fran provide us with some options for the board to look at and consider. It wasn't a one-and-done deal. I was hoping he would come back with three or four or five options that we could discuss and possibly find something agreeable to everyone, or at least find a version that looked acceptable that we could continue to work off of. There was, there was no mention of a rusty pole. There was a mention of the galvanized pole. And we, I've spoken with many people as well, and the consensus seems to be they'd like to have it camouflaged slightly more than a, you know, brown or silver smokestack in the distance, because it will be seen. It's much larger than the balloon in different daylights. It will be visible. So I think if we can at least blend it into the hillside, that, in my opinion, is what I'm looking for to be helpful. And I feel like that's doing our part with the townspeople to try to blend it in. The tower that Franz referred to and you're referring to is atop Pat's Peak, which is very visible, I agree, but it was also before zoning had any control or anything to do with it. So we need to step beyond that. That's nothing that we could have any control over.
Well, I just, I just think putting the fake branches on it makes it look fake. And that was some of the feedback I got.
If you go online, Bill, and look at some different websites, there was many different camouflages that I found. There were some aspen trees. There was a palm tree. There's a lot of different options that we can look at. You know, and really, I was hoping Fran would bring us something or that his company could offer us something that would be a little more digestible.
Yeah, I mean, you're never, you're never gonna make a cell tower that's 150 foot tall look like a tree, where the trees around here are, you know, 80, 90 feet-ish or whatever. You're never gonna make it look like an actual tree. But it'll break it up so that it's not just, it'll blend into the background, the surrounding, you know, as much as you can. You drive down 89, you see a lot of them that, you know, have the tree branches. And yeah, I know it's a cell tower, not a tree, but it breaks it up and it just makes it look, it blends in a little bit more and just looks a lot better, you know, in my eyes. And I just, I think that the branches do lend a lot to it, as to, you know, breaking it up and blending it into the background.
Anyone else?
If I could jump in here, I, what's obvious from this discussion is that beauty is in the eye of the holder. And different people have different opinions with respect to what's attractive and what's not. The photographs that you're seeing here on the screen right now are incredibly misleading in that nobody has this view other than the landowner. Because the tower is set back so far from the property lines. No one's going to see, that's probably 100 feet of the stalk.
So, and as we Stop you right there with that. Liberty Hill is not the highest hill in town by any stretch. There's a lot of hills that are higher than it. And as you look down from Bear Hill, Patterson Hill, Creamy Hill, Foster Hill, Pat's Peak, you're looking down at it. Now, looking at the topography of your plan, you're about 10 or 15 feet below the break of land, and this tower is going to be 150 feet tall. So let's call it 20 feet below the break of land. Let's say the trees around it are 85 feet. That's 105 in my book, and you're proposing 150-foot tall tower. So I struggle to understand how you're not going to see this from everywhere in town. I looked through the gray balloon, and I'll admit, I didn't see it. I looked for it from a number of different peaks in town, and I was unable to find it.
And, 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 one, the balloon was red. We've submitted evidence to that. The fact that a butter called it a gray balloon doesn't make it a gray balloon. It was a red balloon. Two, it's a very standardized test. We do this all the time. And the fact that you couldn't see it means that the tower wasn't visible, not that the balloon wasn't visible. And, you know, I go around town, the plan to go around town, obviously, members of the public and the, you're assuming that it's going to be visible when the visibility demonstration actually showed that it wasn't. And we didn't go everywhere, absolutely not. We went on public rights away. But
Fran, so I just have a comment. So at the last meeting, you stated that the balloon was so many feet wide and the tower was so many feet wide at the top. So there was going to be a discrepancy on if we could potentially see it or not.
That's not true. No, that's not true. That would mean that the, doesn't show that it's more visible. This was a height demonstration. The height isn't going to change whether the balloon is three feet wide or 12 feet wide. The, whether or not the tower will be visible from a location is indicative of whether you can see the balloon. I, I'm not trying to say that this is going to be invisible. We showed some spots that were visible. I just think that, you know, this picture right here is incredibly misleading because there was no vantage points on public rights away that, anywhere close to this. And I believe one of the board members, and don't, I think it was Mr. Dean, said that he was concerned that from some of the other peaks, you would see it against a peak, and he wanted it to blend in more. And so that's why we proposed the brown, because it would blend in with a vegetated background. If you want a tree, we'll give you a tree. I just think it's so inappropriate. You give an, you know, in a situation like this, where the landowner is going to potentially see that stalk, what he's going to see is a giant pipe cleaner. He's not going to see an artificial Christmas tree that tapers because you can't have the branches go out 15 and 20 and 30 feet, because then they start to bend. So, you know, it's just, you have an example of a tree in Hopkinton. And I'm confused. I didn't know if it was in Hopkinton or in Henneker. However, you have an example of what they start to look like over time, and I can't improve that. And, and you're right, you can go on the internet, and we can make these look like pine trees or Saragusa cactuses or things like that, but they're still artificial whatevers.
And So, so Fran, I just want to stop you there, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to continue with our board discussion and continue with what you started out to do of getting a pulse of where this board is on the camouflage and not, so we can direct the representatives.
Well, thank you. I still think, you know, that we need to take a vote to find out whether the majority of us feel that it needs to be camouflaged or not.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I feel that everybody expressed their opinion on the last meeting that we felt it needed to be camouflage. And he was going to bring back, you know, different pictures of what the pole would look like with the various types of tree covering it. And so I feel like, I feel like we just picked up where we, where we left off last week. And we really didn't, you know, take, take a break and have them go back to the drawing board and come, come back to us with a different idea.
And just stated, if we want a tree, they'll give us a tree. So I don't see where this is a problem.
Yeah, but what kind of tree? We have no examples in front of us.
So, yeah, but, but this is the thing. He needs to come back with a bunch of different options. And I, I think we were quite clear at the last meeting that that's what we wanted. And even in the preliminary discussion of this project, there was talk about putting branches on this thing. So I think we've been clear twice of the direction where we were going. And now we need to see the results.
I wholly agree. I wholly agree. I mean, we're pushing, all trying to push the car, and it isn't going to move. I mean, it's sucking the mud. And I think there's a couple ways that we There's a couple ways that we could do this. One of them is if we made a motion to, I think. Let me back the train up here. My line of thought is scrambled, but. I think we owe Tom and we owe Ron Goss, again, not the proper stated. You know, that we are behind them in the concept of what they're trying to do here. It's obvious if you've ever used a, a cellphone up the Bradford Road that there needs to be a tower someplace to get that service through. And we owe them an agreement that the idea that we're behind them with this principle. But we've got to get beyond whether or not it's camouflaged or not. And if we, if you feel there's a majority, I mean, to me.
Then Dean, yeah, Dean, let's read, like, pull, go through the group. Do you wanna see a camouflage? Tia Hooper, yes.
What constitute con, what constitutes camouflage?
Put the branches on it.
So you gotta, you gotta specify that because there's different kinds. I, this, this rusty colored metal is, is, could be considered a camouflage.
We, we gave the option quite clearly, Bill, at the last meeting to bring the board a few options to discuss. We didn't have a. Soul thing identified. We asked Fran if he could come back and show us some options that the board could discuss.
It sounds like.
No, we, we were quite clear at the last meeting what we were looking for as far as branches. Put the branches on it. Come back, show us some different options. That still has not happened.
Dean, I agree with the conversation that we owe the landowners the. Utmost respect.
This would all come together if you'd let me finish the motion. And, and I'll climb in here with the idea that if, if we okayed the concept. Of, of having a cell tower at this location on Liberty Hill. Pending. Pending. A camouflage which we could approve as a group. We, we have this off our plate and we don't have to listen to any of us again nor Fran.
Dean, I'm, I'm gonna say that it needs to come back to us so we can make that, it still has to come back to us if we're gonna make a decision on what it looks like. Um, I think the landowners already know based on the first waiver that was approved. That we, you know, we totally understand the concept, but this needs to go through the process and continue. Until we get this finalized. That's the way I look at it.
And it, it's just a different way of looking in the same direction is what it is, and I'm not gonna argue over it, but I mean, uh. Somebody either make a motion to table this until we get more in front of us, or.
I'll, I'll ma- I'll make a motion to table this until, um, they can come back with. What we are looking for as far as the camouflage that has been discussed now. This will be the third time.
I'll second that.
Tia?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
And I'll vote yes. So I would say by that vote, we're waiting to uh, table this until we get some more examples of camouflage.
April fourteenth, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that will be the date, April fourteenth.
Okay, I. I heard Fran clearly state that he has agreed that they will do a camouflage tower with some branches. I can't see why we could not do. Conditional approval tonight pending Fran returning with acceptable camouflage to the tower. To move this along rather than install it for another month. I don't feel that's fair to the landowner.
I'm entirely in favor of this project. I just wanna see the camouflage. Um. With that motion on the table, I feel that that's one way to go about it. The way you say is another way to go about it. I'd be comfortable with either. Um, I realize we just moved on that motion, uh, so I don't know what, um.
Tia would have to, Tia would have to move to amend hers.
So we're gonna, we're gonna wait to see pictures. Basically of tree branches on a, on a cell tower that we, we all know what it looks like.
We know, we're waiting.
Pardon?
We're waiting to see what they're proposing to build because as they stated, there's several different types of trees and what have you. So if we just say tree. They can come in with a palm tree. Obviously, we don't want that. But we wanna see what they're proposing. We need to, we need to have what they're proposing. On paper in front of us before we approve it, because otherwise you could wind up with a palm tree.
So why don't you just say pine tree?
Logic says we wouldn't, but if we don't have.
Why don't you just make the proposal for pine tree branches right now and get it done and over with?
I would, I would like to personally look at what they propose. Um, but again, I don't see why we could not give the landowner conditional approval tonight pending. Them coming back with an acceptable camouflage tower. I don't wanna just give them the uh, reins tonight to say a pine tree. I've seen some pretty sickly looking pines.
I would tend to agree. We had a motion, we approved it. Unless somebody's gonna make a motion to see if we can get Tia to amend it, it's a, it's a tabled issue until next meeting. And um. You know, I'm.
I'll make a motion to see if Tia is willing to amend her motion.
So my, my concern is we've had a little bit of hesitancy on putting the branches on the tree. Um, this is now the second time. And I think to, to be overly cautious, I think we need to see, see what there's being, or what is being proposed before we move forward.
Well, I think that's what they're saying though, conditionally approve it based on our approving what the camouflage is.
It would have to come back here and then obviously if you're not satisfied, the condition's not met.
It, it also has to go before a building permit, which won't be issued until it gets planning board approval.
Well, the plan won't get signed unless you're satisfied with the condition of the tree. So.
I think we have plenty of insurance, Tia.
Okay.
So will you rescind your motion and I'll make a new motion?
Or amend, or amend yours?
Um, who seconded? Ryan seconded it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him as well.
I see, I see both, I, T, I see both sides. Um, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from. I, I, I feel that. Uh, you know, so far we wasted a handful of, none of our time is just waste or useless. I mean, we could have, we could have had this dealt with already. If, uh, if you would have just listened to us, you know, at the last meeting, and I, I'm kinda irritated. Uh, by that because I thought we were pretty clear on what we were asking for. Um, but uh. I, I'm.
You get that taste in your mouth of Dollar General belligerence, you know, on simply giving us what we asked for. And I, I think we're clear enough. You know, that, that we wanna see some examples, you know, uh, I've got the stem carried. Nobody's focused on the blossom here. And um. Again, I, I'm taking, I'm just gonna say that I, I believe we're all in accordance that we want it camouflaged and uh. Pure and simple, whether you agree or not is irrelevant. It, it, you know, it's carried and uh, go from there. But if we conditionally approve the project, it wouldn't be tabled. It would be off our plate until we see some examples. That we can vote on. If we never see.
So ju- so just take it off the table. Scott can make a new mush, motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion to conditionally approve the construction of the tower with a hundred and fifty foot waiver granted. And that they will return to the board with some samples or examples of. Uh, view for us to choose from for what the tower will look like as a finished product. Prior to final approval and building permit. But this motion will give the owners. Conditional approval tonight of the meeting.
Scott, in your motion, the hundred and fifty foot waiver is to a hundred and fifty-six and not further than that, correct?
Hundred and fifty.
One fifty, max.
Right, but we're allowing to one fifty-six for the um. The uh, lightning rod.
So the one fifty included the antenna.
Okay.
Correct, Fran?
No, it's one fifty for the tower plus a six foot lightning rod.
Right, the lightning rod doesn't count.
Well, no, no, but, but see, but see, one thing you gotta realize now is that to make the tree. Uh, symmetrical, you've gotta put the branches up above it. Because you don't want a square tree, you want a tapered tree. So what'll happen now is that the, and so it's, it's semantics at this point because the tower will be a hundred and six, fifty feet. But the branches will go up to about a hundred and fifty-six feet, and the lightning rod will be inside that. So uh, it, we're all saying the same thing, but the uh, the tower itself will be one fifty, but the accessories, the branches will go up to a hundred and fifty-six.
This is clearly why we wanna see an example.
Exactly right.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Tia?
Oh, just before, before you vote, and we should have some discussions, but I, I just wanna circle back to some, some issues that we, we discussed last meeting. Um, you had asked, um, for the fire chief to amend his letter, which he did relative to the road. He now states that the road is safe and navigable for the, for a heavy rescue and, and engine while the installation of the tower is in progress. Um, we have a letter from the applicant stating that, um, we will be allowed, um, to have space on the tower. Uh, so that will be part of, um, the uh, conditions from the fire department. Uh, we also got a email from the uh, road agent, um. Stating that he did not feel that, um, for this project that a, uh. Any extraordinary measures would be needed or bonding for the road during construction. Obviously, he intends to monitor construction and should damage occur, then we will, uh, deal with the applicant at that time. I just wanted to get those out there in case you disagreed or wanted to add to that discussion at all.
No, I was fine with that. All of those came in during the weekend.
Right.
I had read them and it was, uh, fine. Leo more or less felt that the impact in that area. Wouldn't be any more than if a, a large house was built or two smaller houses as far as time.
Um. Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to make one comment. Um, the. I, I would say I disagree with them a little bit, uh, just due to the fact that in, in order to erect this tower, you're gonna have to have a crane in there. And it's gonna have to be a substantial size crane to be able to reach seven hundred and fifty feet. So it's definitely gonna be a much different sized crane than you would have to, to build a, you know, a single family home. I just wanna make that sure that that's on.
Yeah, and I did speak with the highway superintendent as well, and there is a concern about dust, so. He'll be monitoring that as well, and dust control measures or additional assistance with that might be requested.
Would you like to put that as part of your stipulation, Tia?
Yes.
Dust control is needed.
Yep.
Okay, during construction.
And it, and it might be like calcium.
Right. Okay, just wanted to get those out. Those were sort of hanging things from last meeting. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. We have it, um, seconding, Tia?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Dean will say yes also, so it's unanimous. Um, thank you, and moving on. PB case twenty twenty-one, semicolon, zero-two, proposed site planned for the uh. Conversation, con- conversation of an existing duplex into three units, nineteen Rush Road, map two, lot two eleven. Applicant owner McMurphy, family revocable trust zone CV. Um, this was bumped down to us from ZBA, obviously. Um, there was quite a few things that needed to be addressed. Mark, could you get us up to speed on this?
Sure, I'm just trying to uh, get my screen share working here, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Um, I will be recusing myself from this process. Um, McMurphy's and I have had, um, business together. Um, me and the future, not on this particular project, but just in the interest of, um, being, uh, uh. Uh, cautious, I will recuse myself from any voting or commentary here.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, this proposal, um, in a nutshell is, is, uh, went to the zoning board in January. Um, it's an existing two-family. Uh, the main access is off of Rush Road. It's a, it's a double frontage lot. It, it fronts on both Rush and, and Maple Street. Um, uh, the zoning, they needed to go to, um, the zoning board because in order to have a multifamily, uh, they needed a, a larger property. And a few other, uh, things that we require, uh, under the zoning ordinance, uh, that variance was granted. Um, and the proposal before you tonight is change your use from a two-family to a, a three-family. Um, the, uh, there's an existing garage, uh, to the left of the site, and there was a stipulation from the ZBA. To remove that garage in order to provide parking in the rear. So there'll be four parking spaces in the rear of the site and two in the front. Um, this is a state road, so, um, there was a concern about adding traffic or backing out onto Rush Road, uh, as a concern. Um, I believe, uh, the, the issues I had with this plan have been addressed, and I believe, um, at this point, you, you can, uh, the board is. Could make a motion to accept the application.
Make a motion to discuss the, to, uh, accept the application for discussion.
I'll second that. Tia?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I will also say yes.
The applicants are online, Mr. Chairman.
Would they like to speak at this point?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep, I, I think the only thing that I would add, uh, from what Mark mentioned was. Um, we had to go to the Department of Transportation just for the front of the building if we wanted to widen the driveway. We have gone to the DOT and they've told us over the phone that the permit is approved. We haven't received it in the mail. It would just allow us to do three in the front, three in the back. That way anybody in any of the residences could. Have a car in the front and a car in the back making, so, uh. Uh, they would have front access and rear access from their car.
Thank you.
So currently are the, um, do the cars, there's no turnaround. You back out onto Rush Road, correct?
Correct.
So that's.
From the front.
That's an existing situation. And it looks like on the Maple Street side, there'd be adequate room to back a car out and drive onto Maple Street, or you wouldn't be backing into Maple Street.
Uh, you, you wouldn't be leaving or entering from Maple Street. It would all be from Rush Road.
You know, there's no, no curb cut out there at all, Dan.
Okay, I got you.
There's none planned. There is a curb cut, but this, the, the, the plan is not to use Maple Street, right, Mark?
Yeah, correct. Okay.
There's actually a curb, old curb cut here.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that in the parking. So I didn't know if they were planning on being able to go both ways.
Yeah, no, it's, it's everything's gonna come in and out of, of, um, of, of Rush, which I think is a good idea.
Far safer.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, uh, just as point of clarification, currently before the garage is removed, there's three vehicles backing out onto Rush Road currently, correct?
Correct. This is the existing condition here.
Oh, sorry, wrong mark.
Oh.
So there's no further increased vehicles backing onto Rush Road from what it's been?
Right.
Anyone in the back lot will be driving to Rush Road.
So this is a thirteen hundred square foot lot? Uh, Mark, if they hadn't received the variance, how big of a lot would you have had to have for three units?
Thirteen thousand.
I'm sorry, thirteen thousand. Is it, is it ten thousand or twenty thousand per unit?
It's, uh, would, it would have had to been, uh, thirty thousand square feet. You need, uh, twenty thou, yeah.
So they got, they got a variance with less than half the land area. Wow.
Correct.
Surprising.
I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I don't know when it's appropriate to make them, and it has nothing to do with the applicant or the project in and of itself. But it has very much to do with that ZBA meeting that took place. There was an awful lot of discussion about how to prove hardship on this case. All of the questions that are usually asked of an applicant, I don't feel were asked. All of the questions that are usually asked of an applicant, I don't feel were asked. It's a nonconforming use as it stands presently. So we're now not bringing a nonconforming use into conformity, but we're making it more nonconforming. I have huge concern about the precedent that's being set. I don't think there's any recourse on the ZBA because we're past the thirty day appeal process, but I don't know. I'm just very uncomfortable with this, not because it's not a good project, but because of how it came through the ZBA. I was part of that meeting, as were a couple other people on this board. I just want to go on record that I'm not comfortable voting on this at all because I don't think that I don't even think that everybody that goes before the ZBA is asked the same questions and that was stated at the meeting and and I I have concern with that.
I didn't see that meeting. You know, as I look at it, I'm kind of surprised that they got as many units as they did with that small amount of land area. However, as I look at it, it looks to me like it's all within an existing building. So it's not it's not like we're subdividing or adding buildings, getting more units or what have you. So I mean, precedents is it it's it's harder to to follow and say, oh, you let this guy do it, I gotta do it. If you're a little bit different, I mean, I am surprised at the number of units where it's all in an existing building. I guess I kind of see where it's apples to oranges compared to if somebody had thirteen thousand square feet and they were looking to put three standalone townhouses or what have you. I guess maybe that's partly why I'm not on the ZBA because I don't want to be the one that has to, you know, make those decisions. So I don't know.
I agree. I I agree with where you're going with that, but you've got a lot of buildings downtown. I've had the funeral for sale and every buyer that went in there wanted to change that to six units. And under this precedent, how are you going to tell them no? Because this
Well, that, I mean, that would be the same thing, so.
But where is the hardship? Three members of the ZBA board admitted there was no hardship and I thought that needed to be part of it. So that's my concern.
I guess, yeah, I guess that's a that's a ZBA issue, not our issue.
Well, is there is there any way to ask them the question? Is there any way, Mark, to ask the ZBA for their written explanations of why they approved the the variance?
Well, Tia, I mean, you're on that 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 meeting that night. I mean, there was there was discussions about.
And I have the minutes in front of me and there's nothing really telling me why why they approved the variance.
Part of the minute state, the board struggles with the hardship not being met and no one recalls the last time the property had three units. As the ordinances are currently written, the property does not meet the requirement for a two unit.
Correct.
And the chairman of that board went on to say that in essence, by approving this, we are changing the zoning.
Well, I I I guess in deference to the applicant, I mean, that's a if the board wants to talk about the ZBA and how they do things, I think we can talk about that after this application. And if you want to send a letter to the ZBA expressing concern or, you know, whatever, we can certainly do that. But, you know, the ship is on that particular issue, the ship has sailed and 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 I would happy to continue the discussion after the meeting and and we can certainly convey something to the ZBA if the, you know, if the board feels that's something that should be appropriate. I'd be happy to to do that.
I think we're, you you know, we're in that fuzzy area here where you know, these these I don't know how to explain it other than the the municipal rules and regulations, you know, we could we just as laymen cannot keep track of them all without making it into a full time job. And all of these, you know, time limits and things like that on appeals and things like that, we've as a group have to keep our thumb on them, you know, to to do it in a timely fashion.
I will tell you the ZBA created a greater the variance. Go ahead, sorry, Dean.
Kind of fuzzing in and out here. I don't know how to progress with this at this point.
Well, it is a public hearing, so if the board doesn't have any questions for the applicant, I would suggest we open up the public hearing to see if anybody any of your butters have any questions or concerns.
Do we have anybody at this point?
If you're on a butter or a resident, if you could raise your hand, I'd be happy to recognize you. There are some some people on on the call tonight.
Mary Ann Cameron is here, but she's muted, Mark.
Okay, Mary Ann. Mary Ann, you can, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello.
Hello, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Cameron, thirty nine Rush Road.
Comments, Mary Ann? Concerns?
No, I I've just was invited to the meeting, so I thought I would pop in and see what was going on. It's to me, it's an existing building and there's I I don't see any issues with extra people coming in and going from that building. If they're not building, you know, like he said, someone else said, Dan, I think, said they're not building three standalone units. So I'm okay. We're my husband and I are okay with this project. As far as we can tell.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion from the public?
Does anyone else like to say anything? You can unmute, unmute, but you could raise your hand or or turn on your camera and let us know that you'd like to speak. I do not see.
I'm I'm not privy to the zoning board meeting. I was not there or nor did I tune in or look at the minutes on it. But it's an existing footprint. It seems as though the ZBA has to have the garage removed to satisfy the traffic flow. And everything seems to fit within the existing footprint as well as meeting the parking requirement. As for what happened at the meeting, I'm not privy to that, but it does seem to fit and work on the piece of property.
Mark, are there any waivers being sought?
Uh, no. So there was a there was a couple of things missing on the plan that that Jack did here and and he addressed them. I asked him to put on the water line, uh, which is here, which will be upgraded to service the property and the sewer line. Um, and a few other things, asking to mention the parking, but no, this this plan's in in good shape.
I mean, I I like the idea of, you know, increasing the housing stock in town and what have you. Um, and it's within the, you know, the existing building. Is there hypothetically, if this place burned down, got torn down years down the road, does the variance allowing them three units, would they be allowed to put three standalone units in here if that building were to disappear at some point in time? Or or would be, they would only be able to rebuild back in the same footprint?
They'd have to build in the same foot footprint because of the setback requirements. There's some issues there. Plus, this plan is before you as as a plan of a of a one one building. Um, and to me, the approval was granted to go from a two family to a three with an existing building, not three townhouses or something like that, Dan. So I, to me, yeah, I I don't think they could do that myself. If you you can see the setback lines on here, the the building area is pretty tight. And I I think that'd be a violation of their approval, to be honest. We not only the planning board's approval, but the ZBA approval.
Do we have anything from any of the other rebutters?
I don't see anybody else wanting to comment.
Well, we'll close the public meeting then. Any more comment from the board?
Will will any portion of this be owner occupied?
No.
If they, if if it had been, they wouldn't have had to go as well. They would have to go to the ZBA for the area, but the use was a special exception, which was granted too. If it's owner occupied, it's actually allowed.
Right, that's that was our understanding. So if we were, if we lived in the house, then we could have two additional
Unit.
Units there. But when we, you know, we're trying to do the research to present to the zoning board, I looked at seventy units, seventy properties around this one. And seventy four percent of them don't meet the zoning requirements. And it would be difficult, I think, for the zoning border and that, you know, I I'm sympathetic to what Heidi's saying. But anybody trying to do something with a property to upgrade it would run into similar difficulties and our goal here has been been to provide a unit that's safe and comfortable, but for mature residents, whether they're mature young people or mature older people. But somebody who wants to live downtown in a decent apartment. That's what our goal has been for this project all along. The reason why we ended up with three units instead of just keeping it a two family is because the two family version, there is a small apartment over the left side, which was a barn originally, and then the remainder of the building would be considered one apartment, twenty four hundred square feet. That would be a difficult apartment to rent. In addition to that, the right side of the building has a staircase that goes to the upstairs. But from that section of upstairs, you can't get to the rest of the upstairs. You would have to go back down the original, the staircase you just went up, walk to the center of the building and go up a different staircase to get to the other part of the upstairs, just the way the building was built. So the only way to really upgrade it that we could see that made a lot of sense was to invest a lot of money into the center of the building so that you could end up with three comfortable apartments, two one bedroom apartments and one two bedroom apartment.
What what was the reason for eliminating the access to Maple Street? Was that a DOT requirement or something the ZBA asked for? Just curious why you'd give up a a curb, an existing curb cut on State Road.
Well, you have, you're allowed to have two driveways. And when we looked at the property, we didn't feel like it's really that safe to have another, you know, in and out off of Maple Street, which is busier than Rush Road. And with the two driveways that you have on the Rush Road side, it just felt like it was safer. And then again, talking to Mark, talking to the DOT, everybody agreed that coming in and out on Rush would be better than coming in and out on Maple.
I think too, on that whole aspect, when you get downtown like that, it it almost especially if they can see down through it, it becomes an alley and people that don't even have anything to do with all the billing are using it as a turnaround. You know, it it, I think it's vastly better than the way it is, you know, planned right now than to come out on Maple Street.
Agree with that. Mark, is there any comments from the fire department? Just talking about staircases and access, just kind of maybe think of that.
Um, no, they're 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 they were more focused on, you know, seeing the plans once they get a mature enough, if it was to get approved tonight, to see how it's going to be cut up and they're gonna be looking to sprinkle the building and it's one of the reasons why, you know, the water main is gonna have to be expanded. So, um, no, I I actually got an email from the fire department today. They're fine.
Well, and this will fall under our new housing ordinance anyway, correct?
Uh, yep. Yeah, and this 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 was gonna have to be built to the state building code anyway, even if that hadn't passed. But, you know, now there's, you know, depending on the timing, hopefully we'll we'll have an inspect inspector on the books sooner than later.
And that, you know, board should realize too, by that, you know, passing yesterday, that it it's most certainly lightens our luck a little bit with the detail that we have to look at or be concerned with because it's more than covered within the state RSAs at this point.
There's truth to that, but it's harder to back a truck up after we pass it. I think on any project, I don't think we can rely on that wholly.
Well, no, not at all. When we sat relying heavily on the state, I think we're in trouble. Of course, we're still a planning board and we still have minds of our own, but it
Well, and that building code has been in place, even though we haven't been able to enforce it.
Any other discussion on this?
I I I struggle with a thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty eight square foot lot. But I do see that we're making some vast improvements with sprinkling the building, which is making the entire downtown safer and as well as reducing that curb cut onto one fourteen. If this unit were to fail tonight and stay as a two unit, that curb cut would not have to go away. No, with the garage, no, it'd have to be sprinkled. Given the proximity of all the other buildings as close as they are, I almost feel we're making better headway with sprinkling the building and eliminating the curb cut, even though we're coming up quite shy on a required square footage area.
Scott, why was that land mass concerning?
What was that, Heidi?
What was your concern about the land mass? What would, why is that?
It's just smaller than what meets our current requirements. But I feel there's quite a trade off with having that building sprinklered to protect the entire adjacent downtown as well as taking that curb cut off of one fourteen. We always end up with trucks parked by Jin Jin loading and unloading and it's often kind of a treacherous spot to get around. So if there's not traffic coming in out of there, I kind of feel like we're making a little headway on improving things, even though we're not meeting the required square footage footprint.
Any other discussion?
I I guess just a question. This is Ryan. I I just see, I know we've had a lot of issues with the with the trash in the past, definitely in that area. It looks like it looks like according to this drawing, we're going to have more trash. It looks like it may may have a fence around it, but I was just curious if there's going to be screening or anything that would cover up the trash from being seen.
Yes. I'm sorry, with, well, yes, there's a fence around the trash and then also fencing along the back of the property. So anyone driving by on Maple wouldn't even see where the trash was fenced in.
Ryan, this has been quite an issue throughout town for a while and I've worked with Joe Divine and Tia on it. The new regulations that just passed the town meeting give the town enforcement, the select warden, the health officer, an enforcement mechanism for dealing with trash and dumpsters that are unsightly and overflowing. So hopefully the overflowing dumpsters around town when the kids arrive and depart is going to be nipped in the bud with this new regulation.
Also, I I live across the street from this building. So we'll be over there pretty regularly, just, you know, for lawn mowing and things like that, that I'll be able to follow up to make sure things are tidy.
So so Mark, are you proposing a fence along the whole back property line here, along along Maple?
Yeah, that's it's not in this plan, but that was
Okay.
The one thing that, you know, when you look at it and you're coming down Maple or if you're on the property looking out towards Maple, it's fairly open back there. I mean, anybody can drive up Maple and see the back of the house.
Right.
And but yeah, it'd be nice to have something to just give the renters that privacy, a little more privacy.
I respect that the McMurphys are adjacent and present property owners, but we cannot make our, any of our decisions based on that because there's no guarantee going forward that they will forever be across the street or own this property. So I think that we have to leave that out of the equation.
I agree.
As I look at this plan, talking about trash and parking, to me, it looks like the the parking spot closest to Maple Street, if you were parked in there, you wouldn't be able to back out turning towards Maple with the rear end of the car and get out without a two or three point turn or more without hitting the other cars potentially parked there. And if there was a car parked in that spot on trash day, you wouldn't be able to get to the the trashed in area. It seems more logical to me that the cars would park against the opposite side from where they're shown now and trash maybe staying where it is. So that way you could back out into a wider part of the lot, wider part of the parking area and then drive, you know, in one in one turn to into a wider part of the lot, a wider part of the parking area and then drive, you know, in one in one turn to to Rush Road.
Yeah, that's certainly a possibility. There's four spaces behind the building. But once we get the DOT permit, we'll be able, because we're gonna repave the front, the front, the all of the tar and everything is kind of cracked. It really needs to be redone. But if you have three cars in the front, you would only have three spaces in the back. And I think that would be
It'd be, if that spot by the trash was eliminated, there'd certainly be room to get in and out at that point.
Yeah, I agree with you there.
When the garage is removed, does the driveway meet the set back from the adjacent property line?
Yeah, there's no measurements on that plan.
It should.
Mark, what's the setback from the property line? Is it ten feet?
It's on the original.
It's what?
I mean, when when we looked at it, it did. I don't know where you can, if you look at that one drawing.
Well, if you look at those parking spaces, the parking spaces are labeled as nine by eighteen. So if the parking spot's nine feet wide, it looks like the distance between the property line and the driveway is less than that nine-foot wide area. So that would probably be less than ten, just as like I bought here. I don't know if this plans to scale.
And I'm not sure what's the accurate measurement it needs to be.
Oh, we can, we can stipulate that the that the plan needs to be submitted. Obviously, this this is already there. This garage is there. So whatever, it's gonna have to be a setback here. You're correct. So.
There was a change to the driveway side lot line setback last year, wasn't there, Mark?
No. We talked about it, but you didn't, you didn't go with it.
But didn't we change it to the planning board has the authority to?
You're stretching my brain now there.
I think that's the way it went, was that it was left on the books as as ten feet, but the planning board could grant.
Oh, you're right.
Up to the boundary line, I thought.
So I don't remember exactly what it was.
Let me go to that section. Been a while.
I remember, I just don't remember.
Yeah, I know.
Outcome was.
I think the whole basis of that was for shared driveways and things of that nature, so that you didn't have to go to the zoning board if you wanted to do a shared driveway.
But in this situation, regardless, we're still dealing with existing.
Right. I would, I would suspect that the that driveway is close to the back of the, it's the Jin Jin building that abuts this, is it not?
Yeah, you're right. That, I'll read you the language. I actually forgot about this. This is when we had the driveway issue, crossing lines is when we amended Dan. So it says driveways may cross side or back lot boundaries and or lie within ten feet of a side or back boundary with planning board approval. So this is, this is the Jin Jin lot. So that was good catch. So the board would have to agree that that this parking area, which is, you know, the scale is the one inch equals ten. Yeah, the scale is one inch equals ten. So as Dan said, this is nine. So this will will not, this is not nine feet. It's probably four.
Is there adequate room to make that ten? The, I mean, the only reason I bring it up is that it looks to me like, you know, we're at the back of that Jin Jin building. I don't know if they have apartments there or what. I realize five feet's five feet. But if you got cars going by, you know, if I was that neighbor, I'd be like, oh, it's supposed to be ten feet. And they just said, you know, we're fine with four. Now, I realize there's nobody here from the Jin Jin, you know, complaining about it, but just.
Well, you can see, you know, over in the in the locust plan here, how close everything is to that area. This is now an apartment. This was the former laundry. They got an approval from the ZBA to place an apartment here. This is an apartment. I mean, they could
Believe those two apartments in Jin Jin, wasn't there, Mark?
Well, they're already, they were already some.
Excuse me, in the laundromat space?
Yes, they added two, right.
I'm certainly not opposed to being closer than ten feet, but if we could reasonably make it ten feet, I think that would be appropriate to do.
Well, I think this room, I mean, there's only gonna be three here.
Right, no, I think there is two.
You're gonna end up, you know, eating into this lawn area, Dan.
Okay.
You know? Um, so I I guess I need some feedback of what you'd like as a minimum here for them to work with. I mean, with this space gone, moved out front, this can move always, obviously the space can, the header can be right here, which gives plenty of room to back up.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the distance between the header and the parking spaces would make up the distance of ten feet on the backside if that's, you know, I mean, it looks like it could be done. So I don't see why we should give them, you know, relief if it can reasonably be done. But if it can't reasonably be done, then, you know, that's kind of a different story, maybe.
To the maximum extent possible.
Yeah, you know, to the to the maximum extent reasonably possible. I don't know how you police that, but I'm not trying to stop them from doing anything back here, but just in, you know, thinking from the neighbor's perspective, if we could just do as much as we can.
Any other comment? Looks like Mark's waving his hand, but maybe not on muting.
Let me see. Did you mute yourself? Okay, Mark, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
So the, the, hi, everybody. The person who, Jack, who is doing the plans for us said from the side of the building to the boundary line is twenty-seven feet.
The side of your existing building or the side of?
The side of the building without the garage.
Well, Jack's on the call here. Hold on. I'm gonna unmute you, Jack. Jack, going through the drawing. Go ahead. You can unmute yourself, Jack. There you go.
So I just went and looked at, it says it's twenty-seven feet from the side of what's the barn? In once the garage is removed to the boundary line of Jin Jin.
So that's twenty-seven feet from this edge to here.
There.
Okay.
So that'll still give us seven, give available seventeen-foot travel lane for the driveway, keeping the ten-foot side lot line. So more than enough room for a residential driveway.
Yes.
But are you gonna continue that ten feet all the way to the back property line or no?
Yes.
It gets wider towards the back.
Yeah, there's a breakpoint, Heidi, with the stone bound with the drill hole. Do you see it? So as long as they maintain ten feet off of the Jin Jin boundary, they still have adequate room.
Well, I guess, Mark, where's that third parking space gonna go? Is it gonna go to the right of of this existing one?
Yeah. So you see in the front of the building, there are two parking spaces.
Yes.
So just go to the, and can you see it's very light, the porch, the little tiny porch in the front of that building? So go just to the right of that.
Okay.
And that's, and that spot would be for the person who's entering to the far right front door.
Okay.
That part is just not not gonna impact the drive.
Right. Well, that's what I was concerned about. Right, right.
And that's what's currently under approval from the state.
Correct. Yeah, I talked to a guy named Scott Looney, who is for our district, District Five. He's the person who I spoke with who said that Brian approved it and it's being sent to us. We just don't have it in the mail yet.
Any other comments, concerns? Are we ready?
I'm just gonna highlight three issues that will be addressed with this plan, which is obtaining a DOT permit. Just amending the trash fencing to make sure that's noted, it's opaque and that the parking layout be updated along with the ten-foot setback as much as possible. Sorry.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve with Mark's three stipulations.
Second.
Those in favor, Tia?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Heidi?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Abstained.
Okay, and I would say yes. Is that enough to carry, sir?
You've got it.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any other business that we can think of? I have one short thing here. I am facing at the end of the month getting one total knee replacement. And I do not see that it's gonna affect my duties as your fearless leader. Another thing on on the same. Excuse me, or was that feedback? I didn't hear it.
I think somebody's mic was left on.
No. On another note, too, I believe, if you wanted to ditch me as chairman.
I make a motion to grant Dean another year term as chairman.
I second.
We talked about four years.
No discussion.
It never works.
I didn't hear any discussion.
No, all those in favor, Tia, yes.
Dan, yes.
I want you to simultaneously flap your hands. Nice try, Dean.
We need to reappoint vice chair, too.
Yes, we do.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Marco again as vice chair.
And I'll second that. And that's his punishment for trying to escape.
Foiled again.
Yeah. Anything else that we need to cover tonight? I I
Can we just, Mr. Chairman, can we just circle back on this ZBA discussion a little bit? And I I don't know if it would be appropriate if we recommend that the Board of Selectmen kind of ask the ZBA or advise the ZBA that they really need to be reading those five criteria that are held under the RSA and doing that for each application and articulating how, you know, if things are being approved, why they're being approved and if they meet hardship.
I would, I would agree with that. I think, you know, we're, we're, you know, I'm gonna step right in it. This is my last year with you people is in any category and I will not be rerunning. And I'm really adamant about that, but, you know, so I think I'm gonna take the time this year to basically say what I'm thinking. And I mean, I've never had a warm puppy feeling from any ZBA meeting in this town since I've been going to them. And the board changes all the time. I don't know why we jump through all these hoops to make sure that our lines are clear and cut and every I is dotted and T and then pow, all of a sudden, we get stuff dropped in our lap that was just arbitrarily thought of and say, well, I think, yeah, I'm fine. And and I've attended a ton of them and, you know, anything we can do to tighten it up. I mean, we, I've had quite a few things of late that have irritated me a little bit and and we've discussed some of them, some of them we hadn't. But I mean, this is one of them that like Dan made a comment, you know, about he was amazed that with the amount of footage, square footage that was on that piece of property that it was done. And of course, he gets out there and he sees other towns and everything else. I I just think that there has to be a little more explanation on what they dropped downhill. I do realize that as boards, we should be unified with each other. And I've stated that before, that that that, you know, we're not gonna continue to just arbitrarily agree with what's dropped in our lap. And now I've stepped right in it. We'll go from there. I would agree, Tia, that in whatever that needs to be done and you.
So I I'm gonna put it in a form of motion to make sure that it's recorded. I'll make a motion that the planning board recommend the Board of Selectmen advise the ZBA that they need to read off the five criteria criteria and explain why they're granting variances and describe how a application or a case is meeting hardship.
Shouldn't the applicant be explaining?
Either way, the ZBA needs to get those questions answered.
Bill, you're correct. Either way, it needs to happen. But Mark, is it correct that it was stated at that ZBA meeting that they do not ask the questions to every applicant?
Not to every applicant. The the by statute, the, you know, the applicant submitted a complete application. He answered each question. You can debate if you agree with the answers to each of those questions. But there are five criteria that have to be met and, you know, it's not consistent and I don't know what the ratio is. But sometimes they'll go through and and, you know, discuss each question individually before making a motion on the application. And there are other times where they'll just make a motion on the whole application without going through each five points. So.
I honestly think it needs to be discussed for the public's perspective or any bystander. And I think a lot of our discussions sometimes help us to see things more clearly and maybe make better decisions. And I, that that was my problem with this thing. And back to the land mass, if the land mass had not passed on this particular case, we wouldn't be having a discussion about a three-family. And I'm not, it's not changing the footprint. It's not that in and of itself. It's that it's not consistent for everyone that comes before the board. The ZBA.
Yeah, as far as your motion, you know, like Mark said, I mean, I go to a lot of these meetings. Some towns do lump it all as, you know, one vote, other towns vote individually on the the different points. And I generally request that they vote individually on each point. So that way, if there is a point, so if I get denied, I wanna know exactly why, so I can dissect that part of it. So I'll, I ask them to break it down if they normally don't. So that if I do get denied, I have more, you know, I have a better guidance of what to do if I come back.
All right. Well, even 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 in that conversation, though, Dan, and and this is the thing that I guess really concerned me at that meeting was the the chairperson asked them if they wanted to go through the questions and it was like, no, we don't have to. I really, they really should have gone through those questions. And especially since the decision that they made had impact, like had impact to our ordinances going forward. And this board works really hard on redrafting ordinances all the time for our community and for what, for them to take that action and undo certain things.
I don't see any problem with asking the selectmen to request that they go through the five points. That way everybody's I I don't see any issue with that. I mean, it's it's a procedure thing, but
Well, and it's been told, it's been told to me by two individuals that, and not, I'm talking people on our boards and in our administration, that this is not how we change zoning and uses by granting all these waivers and variances. It's by looking at the zoning in that area and seeing if there needs to be changes to the zoning.
Well, I was just gonna bring that up because I think Mark raised a good point. And obviously, this is a discussion that the board should have. I mean, the fact that if it's true that seventy percent of the properties are non-conforming, is it is is maybe the problem of zoning.
Seventy-four percent, Mark.
Yeah.
Right, but those were all grandfathered, so maybe
That's what I mean.
Maybe the intent with the zoning was not to have those grow any further, because if they're going to be granted a variance, right, for whatever purpose, that lot shouldn't stay as non-conforming. Everything should be done to make it conforming.
No, I guess what my point is, is, for example, you know, maybe this property isn't appropriate for a three-family, but, you know, in the downtown area, based on the character of the village, is this property a duplex on a thirteen thousand square foot lot not normal? You know, is that unusual? I I I don't think so. But, I mean, that's a larger question. It's sort of the escaping what you're trying to get through tonight. I just wanted to raise that up because we we did talk about that when we wrote the master plan, trying to have the zoning reflect more of what the neighborhoods were. And we've changed some zoning to address that. And that's a larger issue. We can talk about it later, you know.
Right, but Mark, just just to to go off your point, even as we're looking down to towards the future, just because things look a certain way, how do we want it to look within ten to thirty years? Do we want it to look like a Franklin or Berlin, or do we not?
Well, that's part of this, that is part of the zoning question. So I think we have two things here. First, we need to be sure that our ZBA is acting in a fair and equitable way with everyone that comes before it. I know as a planning board member. Is acting in a fair and equitable way with everyone that comes before it. I know as a planning board member, I would have walked away from that meeting feeling better. Had they gone through those five criteria. There were two people that did not feel this case met hardship and one that was totally on the fence about it. And then the chair says that in essence, by passing it, you are changing the zoning ordinance for one property. And that's problematic to me. So I think we have, we have to make sure that they're treating each individual the same way that comes in there. The secondary question is, we probably need to review the zoning in that area to see if maybe there should be. A reduction in lot size or whatever it may take to bring those properties into a more conforming use. Because I have learned from my experience in just marketing one property downtown. You have a lot of out of town property owners and a lot of out of state property owners in these multifamilies. You're not going to get the cooperation that you're going to get from the Mr. McMurphy that lives across the street. Nor can you prove that Mr. McMurphy is going to live across the street for the rest of his life or the ownership of that building. So our decisions can't be based on that. We know from owner occupied, you have a better building when the owner is present.
Right.
He's across the street, but that's not all the landlords. That's not the Chinese restaurant next door. And I'm not saying that to be negative to them. But you're not going to get the same cooperation. So we have to be careful. And wave, because it's going to come back on us. You're going to get more people asking for it.
I think if the ZBA's criteria is to have a five point checklist, they need to adhere to the five point checklist. That also gives us a solid foundation to work off of.
Thank you.
I second your motion.
Thank you.
I was floating out there for a while.
And Dean walked away.
Yeah, there's no more discussion, I guess we'll take a vote, Tia.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
I'll affirm that, too. I'm going to guess Dean's going to, but. In any case, it passes. Send your letter over, send your nasty gram over to the ZBA.
So it's actually you asked for it to go to the selectmen to go.
Well, the board of selectmen, that's where appeals go. And the board of selectmen is the ones who appoint the ZBA members. I think. Either way, the ZBA needs to be made aware of the, our recommendation. But I really think the board of selectmen also needs to be CC'd or copied on this as well. So they are aware moving forward. So if there is a complaint. It can be addressed.
So how you actually do it, Tia, are you going to draft a letter and and have it as an agenda item on the board of selectmen?
I would, yeah.
Are you going to take that?
I can take that.
Dean, you didn't get to vote in your absence.
Well, I'm sorry. You guys have exceeded the timing of my bladder. Well, hopefully we are being recorded. It's my freedom in my last year.
Oh, my God, it's going to be a long year.
Tell him the motion so he can say yes or no.
I know what the motion says and I say yes.
Oh, no, I'll draft that and I'll, I'll send it out to everybody. So if there's any changes or edits you guys want to make, you can do so.
Now, in in all fairness, you know, and and I think we're bringing this whole conversation up tardy. I am your chairman. I'm on my phone. I would have liked to have done this. If it's that important to you people during the appeal period. And I think we've got a, I mean, we haven't had too many ZBA cases because a lot of changes we made in the zoning. Gave us the capability of doing it, but. You know, let's, let's talk to each other enough to, you know, use some of these things. I mean, it, it.
Yeah, should you amend that then to say that when they pass one of these cases, they should send us that information of those?
Yeah, and and Mark, I really, and no, no slight to you, but I I think if you know something is coming to the planning board. You need to let us know as soon as possible.
Sure.
Right after that meeting that it's coming and send us the documents.
I can send. I could send once, you know, obviously I I know a a case is coming up weeks ahead of time. And once the agenda's done, which is going to be two or three weeks before the meeting. I can send the ZBA case to the, the agenda to the board. And if anyone has any interest in any of the cases, I can just do that moving forward. That's standard operating procedure, very simple.
Well, and I think if they pass or fail it, that we should be notified. We happen to be on that meeting.
That's easy, too.
I honestly, ignorance is not bliss. I didn't understand that appeal process and until I could speak to the right people and learned it, it was too late.
That's easy to do, too.
But I think we'll have a clear understanding. And I think it makes us more cohesive with them. If we understand where they're coming from. Then we won't have these questions.
Well, in all fairness, too, it seems like it always trickles downhill and lands in our lap somewhere along the line. And, you know, to to finish it off, and I mean, the more information and the more time we have to think about it, the better off we are. And go from there. What we'd like to cover?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And I don't think we even have to vote on that, do we?
Good night. Thank you.
Stay well.